Good morning. Today is Sunday, March the 22nd and it's 10 o'clock a.m. and we've called an emergency meeting of the City of Carrollton Council and Mayor. At this time, I'm going to ask Jim Triplet to offer up a prayer for all of us. And I want everybody to know, in addition to the information we're getting, we're praying. We're praying for guidance. We're trying to take everything into consideration. There is lots of rumors out there. We are relying on our local Department of Health and also the State Department of Health to give us guidance in this. And I think within the last few days, we've had some staggering numbers and it's time that we have to take some action to help protect our citizens. We met last night with County Commissioner Chuck and I did to talk about what we need to do and how we need to accomplish protection for everybody. But Jim, if you will, if you'll offer up a prayer for us.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning. God, we're in a time of anxiety, Lord, some fear of the unknown. Lord, we're going through times that a lot of us have never seen before. Lord, we know that you're sovereign. We know that you know all things. We know, God, that ultimately you will work and bring all things to our good if we would just trust in you. God, we thank you for you being sovereign, for all-knowing. We thank you, Lord, for the blessings that you give us. We thank you, God, for the blessings that we're able to be here this morning for this mayor, this city council, to do our best, Lord, as your servants, to help this city, this community. Father, we not only pray for this city, this community, we pray for every state. We pray for our country. God, we pray for our world as we watch this sweep like a tidal wave. God, leaders everywhere that are dealing with this. Father, we ask you to give them wisdom and guidance and direction. Show them what needs to be done. Help them to be faithful and obedient to do it. And Father, it's easy to get scared during times like this. And for all of us here, all of us everywhere, we pray, God, that you would strengthen our faith, our trust, our belief in you. Help us, God, to keep stepping forward in faith and not backwards in fear. Father, we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
We have a resolution that's been drawn up by our city attorney. And what we've done is he's looked at, we've looked at some other cities to see what they've done. And I know people want us to move forward faster, but we have to take into consideration everything. And we're not Atlanta. We're not Athens, you know. So we don't have that population, but we have to consider what's best for our citizens. We have to consider what's best for our community and to keep people as safe as possible. As Jim alluded to, these are trying times. These are times that nobody knows the answer. And I don't, Bob or Brett One said, or Jim, said that their opinion was changing hourly. And I think, you know, we are, we are staying on top of things as much as possible. And we're trying our best to get the facts before we make the decisions. I will tell you that there has been one gathering that has been identified where there are 11 confirmed cases that have come out from that gathering. And that is the main drive we have this morning in passing this resolution. I'm going to let Chuck Connerly, our city attorney, kind of go over the resolution and talk, we can talk about what this does. And our biggest hurdle right now is making every, making every decision we can with the best knowledge that we have and getting it out into the community. That, that's our big issue. I think some people still don't realize how serious this is. And I think Brett alluded to Albany and Cartersville. Are two cities that right now are just being impacted beyond belief because of the number of cases they have. And we don't want that here. We don't, we want people to be mindful of what they're doing and take into consideration their decisions will definitely affect others. So Chuck, if you'll kind of explain what this resolution does for us?
I will. Thank you, Mayor Casey. We, and I want to emphasize that we have been in touch with the governor's office. We've been in touch with state public health officials, local public health officials. And there, there is some guidance out there, but it is evolving literally by the minute. And what we're trying to do is to stay in step with what the recommendations are from the federal government, from the state government, from local public health officials. What we have and what I have prepared this morning is essentially kind of a combination of ordinances that have been passed by the City of Athens and the City of Brookhaven. And they basically are designed to do two things. One is to impose social distancing requirements. And everybody is familiar with the six feet rule between persons. This would make that a matter of local ordinance. The other thing is to prohibit public and private gatherings of more than 10 people. And again, both of those things have been guidance that has been handed down by the federal government, state government, local health officials. What I have prepared are three versions of a resolution. The first version of which is the most restrictive. It would impose the social distancing requirement and also prohibit public and private gatherings of more than 10 people. Period. End of story with no exceptions. The second version of the resolution has the same provisions, but it carves out exceptions for employers and employees who are gathered at their place of work to work. Grocery stores, convenience stores, gas stations, hardware stores and the like. Hospitals, doctors' offices and other healthcare facilities. And then anything that has been deemed by the United States Department of Homeland Security as essential, critical, infrastructure workforce. Those would be exceptions to the 10-person rule. The other thing the, the second version does is it allows the mayor and any two councilmen through declaration of emergency powers to either prohibit or suspend any public or private gathering, whether it's 10 people or more or not, if the situation requires it. So that's version two. I'll explain version three and then obviously answer any questions that you guys have. Version three is the same as version two. It has the same exceptions to the 10-person rule that I just outlined. It has the same provision in there that allows the mayor and any two councilmen to suspend any public or private gathering. But it also follows what Brookhaven has done in that it basically says that any bars, restaurants or other businesses that sell food for consumption on the premises, that there will be no consumption on the premises, that they can stay open and they can sell food for takeout, but, but that's it. And then there's some other restrictions in terms of how the food gets delivered to customers and whatnot. It does allow our restaurants to sell unopened containers of beer, wine and distilled spirits as part of the takeout. But that's again modeled after what Brookhaven has done. But it would essentially limit bars, restaurants and other businesses to takeout service only as it relates to food and beverages.
Okay, y'all read these. Is there any questions? And I think we may have some people outside that may have questions. Is there anybody still out there? Okay.
If you don't mind, I'd just like to clarify. There's a whole list, and this is something we'll post on our website, of, of job functions and businesses that are carved out by Homeland Security. But it means truckers, it means chemical workers, it means, you know, factories that are producing food. All that's very important. And so I know Chuck mentioned some of that, but that's a very long list. So if any of those folks that are thinking, my gosh, we've got a, you know, the, the packaging plant has to run or whatever, this, that does carve that out and those industries keep operating. All industries basically keep operating under that. So all of that's been considered and would be exempt in version two or three.
Any comments?
The other thing I would add is it is a very fluid situation. And we anticipate that we're going to get additional guidance from the state and probably our local Board of Health either today or tomorrow. So there may be, some of this stuff may wind up being a product of just a state mandate at the end of the day. But at least right now, the report from the governor's office for local governments is to, you know, address the situation based on the, the needs of your, of your jurisdiction.
Well, I'd just like to comment that I prefer version three simply because it would not require us to have another emergency meeting in order to adhere to new advice and new restrictions that come down from the state or the local health officials. I'd also like to state that, you know, we, several of us have only been on the job for a short time. And, you know, no one has dealt with a situation exactly like this that I know about. And I'd just like to thank Mayor Casey. She's been on top of everything and has done a great job of keeping us informed. And I just, I just want to thank her for that.
You know, as a limited government guy, I don't like the kind of things that we're having to, or that we're voting on doing here today. Obviously, I've, I've talked to a lot of people in the community in the last few days. And there was mixed, mixed comments from everybody. But I think given the facts of how quickly this is spreading and the, the numbers that Tanner Health has released recently, last 24, 48 hours, it's time for us to act and I'm prepared to do that.
Chuck, do we have any indication from the county? Is the county looking at doing anything similar to this?
They are. And I spoke with the county's attorney as recently as half an hour ago and have provided them with, you know, ver- similar or versions of these resolutions and all. And I would expect that, that they're probably going to follow suit either, either today or tomorrow.
My, my hope would be that, that our action today, it spurs other West Georgia communities to follow suit. That if Carrollton, it needs to spur them on.
Well, we, we talked about that last night. And Commissioner Morgan is going to contact the other mayors and municipalities. And I'm sure it will follow suit. You know, it's just one of those things. When we got the numbers yesterday and there were 11 cases from one gathering, then we knew we had to act immediately. And, you know, I want to say this. I think for the most part, our community has been very cooperative and I appreciate that. I know our law enforcement people appreciate that. Our emergency responders appreciate that. And so this is not something that we look forward to doing. This is not something we wanted to do. I mean, I think I can say for this whole group this morning, we'd rather be in church or getting ready to go to church right now than having to sit here and make these kind of decisions. But this is what we were elected to do. You've put your trust and faith in us to make good decisions. And I can assure you, we are making the very best decisions that we can make based on the information we have. There's a lot of information out there. There are a lot of rumors out there. I just encourage you, if you will look on our website, if you will look on Tanner's website, the best information we have will be posted on those websites. Also, we have the news media here. We have the newspaper here. We will use all those sources to get information out to you. So with this resolution, and, and I can assure you, I will not make these decisions alone. We've all been in constant contact. I know a lot of people think we weren't doing anything, but I think we spent the majority of our day yesterday conversing about what, what needs to be done and when it needs to be done. So you have this resolution and I appreciate Chuck and the county attorneys were working diligently last night to come up with something and even this morning. And I appreciate their support and willingness to help us. So gentlemen, you have this resolution in front of you. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution 08-2020?
I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt 08-2020 revision three, as written.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Do we have any further discussion?
I would like for Chuck to, once, once we vote, and I think we're, we're ready to vote, I would like for Chuck to explain to everyone just exactly what the directive is and that the city is ready, willing and able to carry this out. And that, you know, that it does broaden our powers a little bit, excuse me. And that, you know, we're ready to enforce this resolution as we move forward.
Okay. And I will say, we have the ability for anybody that's outside to ask us questions. And I don't know that there's anybody out there, but we did just check to see if there was anybody out there. We're using a mic from outside, or speaker from outside to be able to communicate.
Oh, Madam Mayor, I just got a text question from someone. They said some of the downtown merchants were asking if they could sell their opened beer that will go bad. I assume that means kegs. Do you see any way for them to do that? That would be an open container of beer. It, it will go bad and they'll lose money on it. I don't know that there's a way to, to deal with that. The question's been asked. Yeah. As it's currently drafted, what they can sell on a takeout basis are unopened packages, which would include bottles and cans. What I would say in terms of kegs and things that are on draft, we still have, you know, in our ordinance, the ability for people to get something and, and stay outside on the square and consume something. It's not a violation of our open container law. So that's what I would suggest. But, but are they, is that going to create a temptation to have a public gathering? Well, we could, they couldn't be more than 10 people. So as long as they adhere to there being fewer than 10 people, they would still be able to get a beer and consume it in the downtown business district. Now, that wouldn't apply to restaurants that aren't in the downtown business district. And the question just came in, could they buy it in a growler? And they certainly can because they could do that now and that is considered a closed container. So they could buy that in a growler and that would solve some of that problem. And, you know, and again, I think it's important for everybody to know that this is a very fluid situation. And it may very well be that as the, you know, tomorrow, the next day, the next day, we get different directives from the state and federal government. And it may also be that we have to revisit some of the things that we're doing. And, and we certainly have, have that option.
I have a couple of questions that have been sent about the feeding efforts from our city and county school systems. I don't think that would be covered because that is an essential need and that is getting food out. I would ask that as these volunteers come, that maybe you could stagger it so that you don't have more than 10 there at a time. But again, that is what I would consider an essential need is feeding these children and keeping food to our community. The other question, and, and some of these, you know, as far as the employment issues, those are going to have to be worked out with your employer and the Department of Labor. And I think it's EEOC, Equal Opportunity, Equal Employment Opportunity. Is it Commission? I'm not sure what that is. So right now, I mean, we don't have any jurisdiction over that. That's something that comes through the State Department of Labor and your employer. Okay. Any other comments or questions, any discussion? Yes, whatever we vote on will be. We will get this out on every social media that we have possible. And I encourage you to share it with with all your friends and, and so that, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read some texts that are coming in.
You're feeling left out here. Your friend is still asleep.
Okay. The other thing is, okay, I think I have, hello?
Hey, it's Dr. Brinier.
Yes. Yes. You're on speakerphone.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Oh, nice. Do they have a projection as far as patient load? Do they make an actual decision on that?
Uh, I have not heard any information of that. I know that Friday, they were talking about setting up some outside triages. We have Chief Bearden here. Maybe he can, have you heard anything other than what we heard Friday? Okay. We, we're very fortunate in that we have three hospitals here in our county. But I have not heard anything about the patient load. I know that the outside triages and those things, I think they're supposed to go into effect on Monday.
Okay. And then has the local, the city or the county decided on any type of funding to allow screening for mentally symptomatic individuals? The symptomatic individuals in private facilities that can otherwise not afford it?
Well, it's my understanding that the president has said that anybody displaying symptoms is entitled to a free screening.
How, how do they get the entitlement?
How do they get that? I think you. It's my understanding it'll be state, I mean, federal funds that will pay for this.
You're completely wrong.
Excuse me?
I said you're wrong.
Okay.
There is no funding. I talked to the governor's office, the Georgia Department of Health, and you guys as well. And there is no funding to send private clinics money to pay for patients that cannot afford the screening test.
Okay. Well. Okay, well, uh-
So, I'll give you an example. So, in my clinic, last course charges me fifty-two dollars for every COVID-19 test that I run.
Okay, so you're saying these are people that have come into you that cannot afford the test?
The entire clinic operates as a non-profit. This is a kind of like clinic that has the funding to deliver this.
Okay, well, I don't have the answer for you for that. I will try to contact the Department of Public Health and see if we can get an answer for you.
No, no, the answer, I know the answer. The answer is that DCA is reserving free testing for high-risk individuals, individuals with significant travel history, and symptomatic individuals in a group setting, like group homes, that type of thing. The question is, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and we're trying to prevent community spread. The way you prevent community spread is you test every single symptomatic patient and identify them rapidly.
Betty, a question I received was if they can't hear the questions on the live feed. If Dr. Harris could do a brief summary of what the question was.
Okay.
I'll come back. Because I think it's important, and that's why I was standing outside, because it's very important. I'll be right there back. I'll be there in about ten minutes.
Well-
I think the question is relating to testing for the virus. And that's not really the mayor and council's purview. And so, that's something that I would recommend to the mayor and council that we defer to the local Department of Public Health and others. I mean, that really is their purview in terms of who's going to be providing testing, where the funding is going to come from, and those kinds of things. And it really is sort of beyond the scope of what we're empowered to do.
Thank you.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
Any other, um, questions as to the passing of the resolution? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same sign. Hearing none, the resolution passes. And I know there's a lot of questions out there. Uh, we have posted on our website the small business loan process of how these businesses are going to, how they can do that. Let me see if we can get this call. Yes, this is Judge, uh, Mayor Council, Kason, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, good morning, everybody. Um, I wanted to know, we have a few questions at my applause, that we have heard that you are shutting down Carrollton.
That's not correct.
Okay, we were just wondering, because there's been a lot of phone calls from residents' families and everything else about closing down the whole town.
No, that is just a rumor. That is not true. We are not closing down the city.
All righty, well, thank y'all very much.
You're welcome, bye-bye.
Uh-huh, bye-bye.
Mayor, you know, there's so many rumors going around on Facebook and this kind of thing that I'd encourage you to share places where they can get reliable information.
Okay, I'll reiterate that. If you'll look on our Facebook page, look on everything that's social media by the city. It's my understanding that Tanner is posting things. You can look on our police department. And we will have this information out there. And as you can see, there, um, there are people already saying that we're shutting down the city, and that's not the case. Hold on just a moment, yes.
Kason, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Doing well, doing well.
I have you on speakerphone, is that okay?
That's perfect, Bob. What is it, how's it going to affect us as a restaurant? I understand, I heard that we're dining, dining, excluding dining, takeout only. I'm just, I'm unclear as to what the measure is and what powers that gives you all in our current climate.
Well, once the governor declared, the state did a declaration of emergency, the county has also done that, and we function under their declaration of emergency for public health. And then that would give us the authority to make these decisions.
No, of course, yes ma'am. I understand that you all have the authority. I don't question that at all. And I'm sure you're up there doing your darndest to get us all the best information you can and doing what's best for all of us. Unfortunately, this is a small populace of restaurant owners that, you know, we depend on this money. We depend on, you know, we have employees that depend on this money. We'll be fine, but, you know, we'll lay off fifty people.
Well, it's my understanding that they can draw unemployment.
It is, it's, I think it's seventy percent of seven-twenty-five is what they'll get at whatever hours they have. So, it's not going to be as significant. It's not going to be enough to live. It'll be below minimum wage almost. So, yes, 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 so we're just a little bit concerned. We appreciate all that you all are doing.
We're all concerned, you know. The other thing that if they qualify, then they can receive assistance through our public assistance programs like food stamps and those kind of things.
But you all wouldn't have any idea what the turnaround with that would be for these young people, do you?
Absolutely not, because we have no idea where this is going and how long it's going to last.
No, I mean, the turnaround is always applying for these services and-
Oh, no sir, I don't, I really don't.
Yes ma'am. I got you, I got you. So, just in synopsis, we're, uh, takeout only.
Yes, sir.
Got you, got you, got you. God bless you guys, and, you know, we appreciate the job you all are doing. And I know it's not an easy job. Oftentimes a thankless job, but, yeah, I appreciate you guys.
Well, that, I appreciate your support.
Yes ma'am. Well, have a great day.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. Huh? No, just let him s- Let him use the microphone out there.
He won't be able to hear us.
Oh. Oh, okay. Ask him to call back, and we'll have him on speakerphone. This is Mayor Kason.
Mayor Kason, I would, you just, a moment ago, felt that we had not closed our businesses downtown Carrollton?
No, we're not closing businesses. Right now, the only thing we're closing is restaurants or takeout. They can have takeout.
Well, one of our local businesses, as of yesterday, which is a drinking and eating establishment, which- What about bars that more than ten are at? And this place was packed yesterday?
Well, I'm not sure about yesterday. We can just go forward from today on. I mean, we are definitely going to enforce this.
Thank you, I was very concerned because it was packed yesterday. I was not a participant of it. Someone else went there. I'm afraid of the exposure.
I understand, and that's why we're doing what we're doing today.
Thank you, dear, I appreciate your service.
You're welcome, thank you. This is Mayor Kason. Hello?
Mayor Kason, in my research of this epidemic, I've been on the state of Georgia's website. They've got excellent information. The Georgia Department of Health has excellent information. And the CDC all have good sources for information that I think is probably a little bit more accurate than some of our local opinion pieces on Facebook, so I just encourage people to be aware of those.
And we have the question of, about the free screenings and those kind of things. Those are something that we have no jurisdiction over. Those will come from the Department of Health. They're the ones that have to make those decisions, not us. We have a local hospital, and they are working with us. So, at this point, I don't know that there's anything else we could do. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, we voted, passed.
You want me to walk through the operative provisions one more time? Just so everybody knows. So, the operative provisions, there are really just four of them, if you will. The first one is that it is now a matter of ordinance that people maintain a social distance of at least six feet from each other when they're in shared or outdoor spaces. But there is a provision in there that says, to the greatest extent feasible, all businesses shall comply with these social distancing requirements. So, there's at least some flexibility in recognizing that within a business, sometimes it's impractical to make sure everybody is at least six feet apart. But it at least makes that requirement part of our ordinance. The next thing is what I refer to as the ten-person rule. And it prohibits all public or private gatherings of more than ten people outside of someone's home. It does not apply to the following. Employers and employees who are gathered at their place of work to work, grocery stores, convenience stores, gas stations, hardware stores, and the like. Hospital, and the reason for that is obviously people will need those supplies as we move forward with this. Hospitals, doctors' offices, other healthcare facilities so that they can go get healthcare. And then, as Tim mentioned earlier, anything that is deemed to be an essential, critical infrastructure workforce as defined by the United States Department of Homeland Security. So, no gatherings of more than ten people with those exceptions that are just listed. It also gives the mayor and any two councilmen the authority to close any public gathering by issuing what is referred to as a declaration of emergency powers. And then finally, it provides that all bars, restaurants, and businesses who sell food or beverages for consumption on the premises are closed to in-person dining. They are allowed to sell takeaway, and there are some provisions in the ordinance that require them, even in the takeout service, to restrict in-person contact as much as possible. And they would be allowed to sell unopened containers of beer, wine, and distilled spirits, but only during the time which this order is in effect. Once it's lifted, we would go back to business as usual.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir. The green belt is open. We just ask that if you're there, make sure you keep your social distancing. And I want to reiterate, exercise is important, so, you know, because that helps build up your immune system. So, I would, you know, we're not closing sidewalks. We're not closing the green belt. We're just closing basically all public places, like parks, places that you would touch things. Like the children would be on the swings, or the slide, or those kind of things. But I think it's important that we do get some exercise. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, just a quick comment. I just want to thank Steve Graddock and Graddock Communications for helping us communicate this out, and the good job you all have done in the past, Colin and his crew. So, thank you for all you continue to do.
One question was asked, what's the consequences if someone doesn't adhere? I hope it doesn't come to that. But we will do what is necessary. And I have all the faith in the world in our policemen and our department as to trying to help people understand why this is necessary. But we will enforce it. So, hopefully, people understand that. And that is not what we want. We want us to come together as a community, as we always have, and let's get through this. No other items coming before this emergency called meeting? Do I have a motion that we adjourn? Motion second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.